We now reconvene in the regular meeting of the Lompoc City Council for Tuesday, January 7th, 2020. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilmember Mosby?
Present.
Councilmember Vega?
Here.
Councilmember Cordova?
Present.
Mayor Protam Dirk Starbuck?
Present.
Mayor Janelle Osborne?
Here.
Mr. Malave, any action from closed session?
Thank you, Mayor. The City Council met in closed session to discuss the one item on the agenda, performance evaluation for the city manager. The council discussed the matter, but no reportable action was taken.
Thank you. Please join me in standing for the invocation by Chaplain Keith McClellan and then followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Almighty God, Creator of all, thank you for the gift of life. Remind us that we are all created in your image and that each and every soul has value to you. Help us to honor your creation with respect, understanding, and compassion, and when possible with tangible acts of kindness. Tonight, we remember and give thanks for the life and contributions of Anne Rouge. While we mourn her untimely passing, we give thanks for her legacy of service to this community as a teacher, a member of our city's planning commission, a president of our Chamber of Commerce, as a past member of our city council and as acting mayor, as well as her many contributions to our community organizations and the clients they serve. Bless her and her friends. May they find encouragement and comfort in her legacy, her friendship, and her care for others, and her love for this city. And now, O gracious God, you know that as we enter this new year and a new decade that we, as a city, are faced with serious budget, resource, and social challenges. Even though we are faced with these challenges, we begin this new year with a great hope. We know that you are with us and want to guide her every step. May we seek your guidance and may we be a community that has the will and capacity to address these challenges for the good of all. We pray that our city council members, as well as members of our community, have wisdom. Wisdom to discern between information that is sound in its merit from that which is spurious, and wisdom to make the best decisions possible for the benefit of our community as a whole. Above all, I pray that in all discourse, in public and in private, on what is best for our city, that we be civil and respectful when we speak of and to each other, even when we disagree with others' positions on issues, and even with those whom we may not particularly like, such that even our children, who are always listening, will be surprised and learn from us what it means to be civil and respectful. And finally, Almighty God, renew us with the strength of your presence and the joy of helping to build a community consistent with your purposes and worthy of your pleasure. We ask this as your sons and daughters, confident in your goodness and love. Amen.
Now, join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. City Manager, report, please, Mr. Trup.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. There we go. Just a short one tonight, and that is a reminder that residents have free Christmas tree pickup for their old Christmas trees between January 6th, which was yesterday, through January 10th. Solid waste collection customers should place their trees three feet away from their refuse containers by 7:00 a.m. on their scheduled trash collection day during the week of January 6th. Residents who might miss the collection at home are still able to drop off their trees for free of charge at the Lompoc City landfill at 700 Avalon Street. On January 10th, from 2:30 to 3:30 p.m., the city's bookmobile will be located at the Santa Rita Village in Lompoc Terrace at the 900 block of West Apricot. Please come and visit. And we did a press release just before Christmas, give or take. We went to update that again. And we had, where is it? The city's been successfully installing cameras throughout the city. The goal is to have between 80 to 100 cameras in place by the end of this year. There are currently 12 cameras in place, using the police department as where they would like the first cameras be placed. Crews have now moved over to replacing 12 other, but these are the older cameras that were already in place in the city. They're replacing them with the new high-definition cameras. Once this phase is completed, crews will then begin work, again, with the police department on the placement of the next 12 cameras. So we'll just keep going until we hit our goal of the 80 to 100 cameras. And that was all I had.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is Consent Calendar. All items listed on a consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be enacted after one motion in the form listed below. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless good cause is shown prior to the council vote. Any items withdrawn from Consent Calendar for separate discussion will be addressed immediately before the second oral communication near the end of the meeting. If there is anyone who would like to speak on Consent Calendar items, please come forward at the moment. You have three minutes.
Good evening. When the minutes were transferred from the city clerk, who did a nice job, to the web, the pages didn't fit. So the bottom of all of the minutes is missing. So I don't know if you want to pass it when the public hasn't had a chance to see it, or if you want to go one more meeting, but there you go.
So was that when it happened, when it printed out? Because I read through all of them as PDFs, and everything was there. I'm just asking for clarification, because I read through all of them, and everything was there on all of the PDFs.
So I didn't look at the PDF. I printed them for a record, and it's not there. So probably you're correct.
So I think what we could do is, because they do exist in the PDF form completely, we can accept it, and we just make sure that the pages are adapted so that if anyone prints them out, they can see all of it. Okay. Any other questions or discussions on this? Councilmember Cordova.
So because the meeting minutes are from 2018, I did not go back and pull that information and go through those meeting minutes. So I will withdraw myself from voting on this particular Consent Calendar item, but I also wanted to ask, and I don't know if this is something that I can ask now, or if I'd have to pull it in order to ask.
I don't know what you're going to ask, but I assume that it's okay to ask now.
Okay. I just wanted to know why it took so long to get these meeting minutes into draft format or for approval from the council.
That's appropriate to ask now.
So I'll give a quick one, and if Stacy wants to add anything, that's fine. One of the things we do here at the city is we do summary-type minutes, which, prior to video coming into play, that was sort of the norm. Nowadays, I think about 75% or more of the cities use action minutes, because that, doing a summary is very difficult at times, because you're trying not to put someone's words in the prop, you want to put it in the proper context. Is the inflection there? Is it not there? So it takes some time to go back. If the, some of the audio that was there didn't entail everything that was included in the minutes, it's trying to figure out exactly what it was. Was it a date, a time, and such. This is the first city I've been to where we do summary. Again, most California cities do the action minutes, because video is available on most everybody's websites. To make the process go more quickly, it might be something, we'd have to change the council handbook to have it be action minutes, and then it could be referred back to the video process if there had to be any detail collected from that. That would be one way to move it more quickly.
Okay. And a second question, or a second part to that question would be, for these meeting minutes, though, was there a video available for these minutes online that was able to be pulled up by the public?
Yes.
Okay. And the only reason I ask that is because when I asked, I was told that there were some other dates that are missing from the digital archive of council meetings. And so I just wanted to make sure that these weren't the same ones, because then it would have been.
I'll look, I mean, Stacy was the one, she was in over the Christmas break we had doing this. Was there any video that you did not find?
No, these are all available. And I know that you referenced 2018. There are some that are from 2019.
Yeah.
Do you, are you also recusing yourself from voting on those?
No, I could vote on those. I guess we'd have to split it.
That can be done.
I do have a question. You said that somebody had told you there were missing videos. Do you know those dates? We can find those, or we can track it down?
No, I don't. I'll have to go back to the city attorney and get clarification on that.
And for the public, historically, the videos are posted within 24 hours of the conclusion of our meetings and act as the minutes formally until these are finished and posted. So that is one of the reasons that the modern era requires us to videotape, is to make sure that it gets done quicker than it used to be. Councilmember Vega?
I'll make a motion that we accept the approval of minutes on the Consent Calendar.
You would need to split it between the 2018 dates and the 2019, so that-
2018, and I'll split it so that we're dealing with the 2019.
And I will give you a second for that, and then ask for us to first vote on the 2018 motion, for those of you that can vote on that. Go ahead and vote. And that passes four with one abstention. And then we will clear those and vote for the 2019 minutes. And that passes 5-0. Thank you for working over the holidays to get these as caught up as possible, Ms. Haddon. I really appreciate it. There are no staff presentations, announcements, or requests, so we will move on to city board, commission committees, announcements, requests, and/or presentations. To city council, do we have a representative from the Public Safety Commission, or?
So this might be something that I dropped the ball on. It's a brand-new, we called it a hybrid process, and I don't think we were able to notify the commission, like the chairperson at that time. So what I'd like to suggest is, we just move this to the 21st, so that they have the opportunity, either the chairperson or the full commission, if they want to be here to talk about it.
Okay, so move it to the January 21st?
If that's-
Councilmember Starbuck?
Well, I wanted to mention, these were council requests, and so we didn't request a joint meeting. We, Councilmember Mosby had asked specifically as a council request, because I remember doing a second or third on this.
Okay, well-
The way that this item came about is through the Public Safety Commission. Public Safety Commission had a meeting and made three recommendations to the city council. They're listed there on the agenda.
Yes, this is true, but it was brought up at the dais. There was no movement at the commission level.
Councilmember Mosby?
Yeah, I believe what I asked is if I needed to make the council request, or could this be brought forward for our discussion? And I believe you said you guys were working on something to bring forward for our discussion.
Yes, we were, and this is that. So this item is for the council to decide whether they would like to have full staff reports brought back on any of these three recommendations. If you can go, if you feel like you know what these recommendations are, or you feel like you can understand what the recommendations are based on public comment tonight, then you can go ahead and direct us tonight, since it's on the agenda, to bring back full staff reports on these, if you would like, or we can continue it to the next meeting, if you would like.
I had the opportunity to be at that meeting, so I saw the passion there and the 110 people in the room over this. So it's, if there's one, my commissioners here, I don't know if there's any other public safety commissioners?
The item is on the agenda tonight, so if you would like to take public comment and then decide what you'd like to do, then you can do that.
If the one commissioner wants to come up, that's, that would be good.
So I started with that, simply because it was recommendations for, from the Public Safety Commission, and wanted to give them an opportunity to speak to that if anyone was present. So we can start there, or council can move right to the discussion. I'm at the pleasure of council as to how to move forward on this. Councilmember Starbuck?
Well, you know, if it came to where the council has to make a decision for the Public Safety Commission, I'm going to support everything that the Public Safety Commission has recommended here. And that would make it short and simple, that the increased frequency of the meetings from quarterly to monthly, adoption of a surveillance camera registration program, and investigating adopt a program for assisting residents to form neighborhood watch programs. That's what they asked for at their meeting. So I would go with the recommendation of the Public Safety Commission.
Councilmember Mosby?
I know my commissioners here, and she was the one making the recommendations at the meeting, so I think it'd be appropriate to let public comment come out.
You're more than welcome to come to the microphone and speak to this issue, since you're a member of the commission.
Hello, my name is Maria Guinega. I'm a Public Safety Commissioner. And actually, I did put those items on the agenda. And the reason for putting those items on the agenda, as you all are aware, Lompoc has had an increase of crimes, especially homicides. And I have many community members coming up to me saying, hey, why, we need to do more, and we want to be involved. And I got that input from them. Also, you know, I have a lot of angry residents, especially in the lower-income area, saying, do they not care about us? Because most of these crimes are happening there. And we all understand what, when there's a crime committed, you know, people are afraid of retaliation. Therefore, that's why we, you know, we talked about the camera system. As I mentioned before, and I mentioned it in the Public Safety meeting, the city of Santa Maria has camera registration, the city of Arroyo Grande, and the city of San Luis Obispo. So if you go into their websites, they have the form that people fill out. So it's not like we would be, we can, I'm assuming, the city of Lompoc can ask the other cities, you know, for feedback, how are you implementing this? So shouldn't take a lot of work from the city of Lompoc, since you already have three neighboring cities implementing this program. And a lot of people are in favor of this, because cameras will become the witnesses, and they don't have to be out there and exposing themselves, you know, due to the retaliation. Neighborhood watches. I had several people approach me, send me texts, emails, saying, hey, we need, we want to get involved. But we, they would like to formalize some sort of neighborhood watch. And the National Neighborhood Watch, anyone can start it. The only thing we were asking, the people I spoke to, that they were asking is, can we get some support from the city or the police department to say, you know, or maybe even a training video or anything, where a neighborhood watch can gather and say, you know, this is when you call 911, or this is how you would deal with this situation. And that, if you go into the National Neighborhood Watch, they even sell the decals, and people are like, we'll buy them. You know, we don't, they're like three cents, $3. So it shouldn't be a big burden on the city. They're just asking for, people out there want the city to help them, help our community. That's what they're asking for. They want to be involved. And the frequency of the meetings, the reason I ask is, as a Public Safety Commissioner, I was becoming extremely worried, showing up to meetings with serial items on the agenda, when we were having burglaries, crimes, needles found in parks, you know, homicides. And people started asking me, well, why, why aren't things on the agenda? Why aren't we talking about this? And I think it's been so long, people want to become involved. And I think we saw that with the peace walk, we saw with the forums that have been held. I personally have gone to apartment complexes, held meetings. As a Public Safety Commissioner, I was given that permission, and I have, I've gone to Arbor Square, I've gone to College Park Apartments. And the feedback I'm getting from the residents, we want more. We want, we want more. We want to help. We're tired of seeing these teenagers run through our neighborhoods with guns. You know, we can't let our kids go and play anymore. 3:30 in the afternoon, and, you know, there are gunshots going everywhere. So people are, in my opinion, the residents of Lompoc are saying, we want to be involved, we want to be part of the solution. We understand that our police department is short in staff, therefore, use us, use us, the community members. Is that my timer? So, sorry. So that's where, that's where these three suggests, these three recommendations came from, and the kind of feedback I was getting from residents.
Thank you for that explanation. Really appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. Councilmember Cordova?
So just for clarification for myself, I know that in the last meeting, we discussed doing an evaluation, and there was a subcommittee that was formed to go and evaluate each of the commissions or committees to determine, you know, how often meetings were going to be held, and what the needs and the opinion was of those chair and those members. So just for clarification, then, would we be pulling this one out, since we would be accepting, potentially accepting, monthly meetings? Would we be pulling this one from that evaluation process?
That would be the most logical suggestion, because it was on the list, but since we've already received their recommendations, then-
Mayor?
Yes.
That is something that we can discuss at the end of this item, but I think we should continue with public comment.
Well, I was inviting the commission up to explain the item, and then return to council, being able to ask any questions before we opened it to public comment. That was not actually public comment. That was inviting the commissioner to represent. So I'll invite you up in a moment for public comment, if you'll just hang out and wait. Thank you. So any more questions regarding this item before we open it to public comment? Councilmember Vega?
These are the only items that we can talk about or consider at this time, since we're going to have another meeting to discuss the other policies of the individual commissions. Is that correct?
Yes. Tonight, we can only talk about these three bullets.
Okay.
If there are no more questions for the commission member or staff, any questions for the police or fire department before we move on? Since it is their department? Okay. Public comment is now open on this. You have three minutes. Please step forward to the podium. to the podium.
My name is Michael Harris. I've been a resident of Lompoc for more than 40 years. The city of Lompoc has recently experienced a significant increase in crime, shootings, and homicides. The events have left residents fearful in their safety, businesses have left the city, and property values have been negatively affected. The council must take positive affirmative action to protect the residents and properties in this city. The following actions are strongly recommended. A no panhandling program should be established. It is illegal to prohibit panhandling, but a city campaign to encourage the public to donate money to homes and programs for the homeless, um, would be very beneficial, and could occur, accomplish the objective of a no panhandling program, instead of living on the streets and under a bridge. This would be a healthier and more humane approach toward the homeless. Sanctuary status should not be adopted by the city of Lompoc. The Lompoc City Police Department should work in full cooperation with the Immigration and Customs Enforcement, ICE, and ICE should be requested to sweep the city and arrest illegal immigrants. The city should seek federal grants for law enforcement based on the sudden and abrupt increase in gang and violent crimes. The city should request a gang task force for the city in order to eliminate the drug-based gang activity. And finally, the city needs to determine the source of gang members that have recently resided in Lompoc. Are these gang members exported from the city of Santa Barbara to Lompoc? Are there other jurisdictions dumping undesirables, such as illegal immigrants, gang members, and others to Lompoc? If so, the city of Lompoc should file a lawsuit against these jurisdictions to recover the increased cost of law enforcement, court costs, and custody costs.
Thank you.
Good evening. Good to see you again. My name is John Schluter. I'm here again to first commend you for getting the cameras up. Wasn't too happy about your replacing old cameras when there's paintings out there right now that are under fire. The whole F Street alleys, they've had seven shootings, murders. I got, I walk around and talk to people all the time. And I ask them, um, what happens when you call the police? I feel intimidated. I feel scared. They make them feel like they're the convict, instead of the person calling to try to be assistance. You're shorthanded. You need people to help. They call to help, and you make them feel like they're on trial. They, I was, I made a call to the police the other day. There was a fight going on right outside my house. And 20 minutes later, an officer drove by and shined a light on everybody and just kept on going. Later on, it got worse. There was weapons involved. I called, and the officer said, oh, no, the officer on the desk, he goes, no, there's four officers right there with him. I look out my window, there's no officers there at all. One of the drug dealers is out there checking to find out what's going on. So I don't believe our best interest is being taken. I don't know who's training the officers on the phones, but they need to learn a little empathy, because it's scary. I used to live in Arbor Square for three years. I was there through shootings. I saw the gangs try to tell us that they ran Arbor Square. And they basically ran people out of F Street. A member that was here last time I was here, left because he got scared. My neighbor across the way, left because he got scared, because the gangs don't, and they're not from, all of them from Lompoc. They're not. They're exporting them, and they're giving these kids weapons. If something isn't done, it's going to get worse. The cameras need to be put up where they needed. They need where it's hot. F Street, all the way up. If you put those up there, you will stop a lot of the problems. There's other places, D Street, down on the other side where the shootings and stuff. It's easy to find out where they are. Ask the people that call and find out. Just put pins up on the board. And when you see all the pins at certain places, that's where you need to go and put those cameras up. And you need to get people willing to be part of. I've talked to a lot of people. I talked to the public information lady a month ago, and she told me she's going to get in touch with me, and I haven't heard from you. I hope I still do, because there's a lot of people calling me wanting to get involved. Community watch, walking around, you put four or five people walking around out there, there's 10 or 15 gang members with guns and knives. Um, not a good idea, because these kids have no respect for anybody in the universe. You've got to come up with a solution where the police can be part of, or it's not going to work, unless you want people out there coming after them with guns, too. And that is never the answer. There has to be a solution based on love. And you do that by making these kids feel they maybe have a different way to get around and do this, because right now, they feel they have no other choice. Lompoc's got a future, but we've got to be part of it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Councilmember, John Lynn Lompoc, resident. So I was at the Public Safety Commission meeting, when a lot of discussion came down. And one of the things was discussed there that was within the city's control was adding some cameras. And this evening, the staff talked to us about the fact that that's being done. That was done very quickly. So that's a positive impact. I think the three recommendations from the Public Safety Commission are all good, sound recommendations. And the important thing about it is, it's people volunteering to help in their community. And the way for a community to succeed is for everyone to get involved. We are a caring, involved community. I would certainly hope you would approve these requests, and see all of you on your neighborhood watch. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Nicholas Gonzalez, resident of Lompoc. Um, I'm just going to go through each item. Increased frequency of the meetings. As a resident, I became increasingly concerned because of the fact that you and the council have repeatedly stated that public safety was a priority. Um, however, meetings and agenda meeting minutes did not in any way reflect that sentiment. There were several agendas with absolutely nothing on them, while we were having crisis in the community. Um, that is a very big topic. That is a big topic that gets discussed. Um, I was very relieved to see items added to the agenda. And I think you would be, those of you attended were probably overwhelmed at the amount of people that came in and voiced their concern. Um, I'm glad to say that I'm seeing some improvements. I've actually seen some cameras in the areas, for the people that are not aware. I've seen heightened patrols. But we're far from solving the problem. We're scratching the surface, but we need to do more. Um, the registration is one component. I'd like to see the enhancement, and we've, you've announced that you're doing the cameras, and I think that's a, a great, positive move forward. Um, the other item, I think, that's of more significance importance, is having a partnership with the community, and actually putting some resources and time. And I think, I, I think it will take a little bit of resources, but helping to adopt some solid community watch programs. I, I, if you look in the social media forums, if you, um, talk to different groups, different churches, people want to do something, but they don't know exactly how to go about doing it. Um, I would volunteer, if the city had something, and lead up a group. There's, we had the guardian angels come in, um, but I think people were kind of hesitant, because some of the stigmas in, in being uninformed about actually what would happen and, and what they would do. So I highly recommend that you adopt the three items that were suggested, and I would try to use, so that your time is not, the Public Safety Commission, to vet a lot of this out. Um, I know that you were in the process of reviewing the commissions, and the efficacy of having these commissions. I would say public safety is one. If it's going to be a priority for the city, it should be a priority as a commission as well. Um, I will say, though, that probably 80% of the issues that come are generally with police. I, I don't see as many issues coming with fire. Um, there was a little bit of concern from the community, when there were some statements made that, um, in regard to being able to meet, uh, times. So, again, I suggest that you move forward with the recommendations.
Thank you.
Maria Ginica, I'm speaking, as a resident of Lompoc. Um, one thing that, you know, the conversation out there in our community is, Lompoc needs to take a tougher stand on crime. You need to let the community know what's being done to prevent this. Um, you know, the article about Lompoc implementing 80 to 100 cameras this year, that was a big topic among a lot of the residents, and it gave them a little peace of mind. But the Lompoc needs to do a better job in informing the residents that, hey, we have your back. We know what's going on, and we're working on it. Because residents out there are losing hope. They're losing hope, they're losing faith, they're losing trust and confidence in our local law enforcement, in our local leadership. And we need to bring that confidence back for everyone. We're not here to fight with anyone, or point fingers at anyone. The community wants to come together. I mean, I've been a volunteer since I came back into Lompoc 19 years ago. And for the first time, I can honestly say, I, I've seen people from all walks of life wanting to come together to make our community a better place. And Lompoc has a lot of big things come, I mean, for, you know, coming in the future for us. I mean, Vandenberg Air Force Base just got, I believe, they're the command center for the new Fifth Army, excuse me if I'm saying it wrong, but military, you know, the aerospace. So we have a lot of big things happening or coming into our community, you know, SpaceX, all the missiles. But we want people, when they hear Lompoc, we want them to feel safe. We want them to know that Lompoc is going to take a tough stance on crime. And I appreciate everything that you guys are doing. You can't do it all. That's why, therefore, you have commissions, you have, um, staff to help. But right now, take advantage of the opportunity that you have a community willing to come and volunteer their time. And like I said, from all walks of life. Thank you.
Thank you.
Susan Gallagher, resident. I strongly suggest that the council move with these three agenda points here. And just as a beautification commissioner, we did a project where we donated birdhouses to certain corners. And I just want to report to everybody, they're all there still. Nobody has bothered them. It's wonderful. And we have a great community.
Thank you. Seeing no one else rise, we'll bring this back to council. Councilmember Starbuck.
Just a, a quick question here. The second item about the surveillance camera registration program, could that also be expanded from businesses to businesses and residences?
Yes.
Councilmember Mosby.
To, the way I read it, I think the first item, we could actually take action on. The other two probably need a staff report coming back with, would you say?
Um, well, the first item's going to require an amendment to the board's handbook, but if you wanted to take action and just direct us to amend the board's handbook at a future meeting, we can bring that back.
The other two, say, investigate. So I think we need a staff report for the other two, and the first one, we, we could take action on. Um, I don't know.
Agree, yes.
So I, I mean, I would be willing to make a motion. I don't know if you guys still want to talk about it, but the motion would be to, to, to prove increasing the frequency of the meeting dates from quarterly to monthly, and all the other procedures and process that need to go through updating the handbook. And then have staff come back, uh, with reports for, uh, to investigate and adopt a surveillance camera registration program, add on the Councilmember Starbuck said, both residential and, and commercial components. And then the next item to investigate and adopt a program for assisting residents to form neighborhood watch programs. Um, leave that up to staff to come back with some of the, the components that are out there for options for us to make decisions on. And come back relatively, you know, you know.
Yep.
Councilmember Vega.
And I fully support public safety in the direction we need to go in, but a couple of questions that I have here before we adopt something that could be premature. Increasing the frequency of the meeting dates from quarterly to monthly, I think we need to be concerned with some of the stats that were given from 2018, and compare them to 2019, as far as attendance and meetings and quorums, okay? From what I read here, it says, uh, the one meeting out of four was canceled due to lack of quorum. So sometimes, the structure of everything needs to be looked at, possibly. You know, we have a council handbook change that we're going to make, and there's a budgetary issue also here. But we need to think about if there's something we can do to enhance these meetings, because one of the directions we need to do with these commission meetings is to, uh, ask people to attend the council meetings, so they can also go to the public safety meetings and come here. And obviously, we have people here, and this is basically the main forum. But the same token, we have, uh, these concerns where we're going to change a handbook, when we really haven't addressed what we're going to be doing when we meet with the councils, to see if the structure can be, uh, solidified a little bit more, such as, do we have appointments necessary? We're going to be changing them to, maybe later on, to districts, uh, with our commissioners, since there's a concern here with every area. And are we going to address any time in the future where we're going to possibly, uh, ask for translation services in order to enhance our public safety meetings, or our council meetings, because we could actually have an interpreter here, have some headphones in the back, and for the few people that probably feel alienated, because they'd like to hear it in their own language, uh, because we're here to increase our attendance here, so that people will be, be involved. Because what I see here, is I see everyone wants to have more meetings, but I'd like to see the structure involved before we make some changes as a council, to help these commissioners that are volunteering. I think that we need to make sure that we have the attendance here. And, you know, I said, I'm reading here that, uh, there is a cost, and I know you can't put a cost on anyone's life for public safety, but I just think that's something that we should at least, uh, take a look at before we do something, and then we have to go change the handbook, and then we find out, uh, that we're in the same spot.
Um, Councilmember Mosby, would you be willing to, uh, ask for a report from staff as well, on what that increased cost on the frequency of meetings being increased, rather than just making the immediate change?
I think because it was a recommendation of the commission, they're asking for this, to do this, to go to monthly. It's not like we're directing this down, do you guys want to do this? They had a meeting, they had lengthy discussion about it, they had lengthy public comment about it, and the people said, we wanted this. And I think this has already gone through that component and that level. So, I mean, I still have a motion on the table, and looking for a second for that.
I'll give you a second.
So I still have reservations, not about going to monthly, but about the increased cost and the ability to finance that, given there are other more immediate needs within public safety, as in more cameras. So, um, I support monthly meetings, but I also agree with Councilmember Vega, that there, there was a very big cost to, um, having the meetings. And so I will support this if we allow the departments to evaluate how they could be more cost-effective, if there's other staff that could attend that might reduce the cost, rather than always having the chiefs present, if there was other representation that might be able to attend that might reduce the cost, or alternating between police and fire, if that would help. I think we need to allow some flexibility to address that ongoing cost, because I don't want to take away those funds that could be used for implementing some of these other programs, or buying more cameras and getting them installed faster. It seems to be committing for the same money. Councilmember Mosby.
So minor modification, so keeping the same motion, but, and adding on to it, that the commission come back with potential recommendations for reduction of cost.
Thank you. Do we have a second on that?
I'll second it, just so it moves forward.
Thank you.
So just to be clear, you said the commission come back. So you want to have a commission item to talk about ways to reduce costs?
I wanted the commission to come present us with items, working with.
Okay, okay.
The staff there, potentially how.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions or discussions before we vote on this? Councilmember Vega?
The public safety and the commission meeting, and the commissioner, uh, commission and committee meetings, is that not one of the discussion? I know we're making the motion to move it forward, but we're going to be discussing that with all the commissions and committees also, I, I gather, okay? that with all the commissions and committees also, I gather, okay? Just wanted to make that clarification, that we'll be discussing with everybody, any of their recommendations, their cost-effective and cost efficiency things. And how to increase public attendance here is really important, okay? No one wants to go to a meeting and there's no one there. So we need to, we need to take a look at that.
Thank you. All right, seeing no other questions or concerns, let's vote. And that passes five zero. Now we will open the floor for oral communications regarding any city matter. If it is on the agenda, the preference is to speak during that issue so that it is fresh on our minds, but if you cannot remain for the entire meeting, you're welcome to speak on those. So three minutes on any city matter.
Deb Andrews, Mission Hills. I want to be clear, I understand the importance of cameras in specific areas. What I oppose is the mass surveillance of cameras going up in Lompoc. To the unnamed city administrators, the installation of between eighty and a hundred cameras in Lompoc purportedly to promote public safety and help identify quality of life issues is a fraud. The jig is up. Mass surveillance of citizens and business is only necessary for complete control of the population. Along with data analysis technology through our credit cards, it is used to reward those with good government-approved behavior and punish those what it considers undesirable behavior. Citizens who ask too many questions or are non-compliant would be easily monitored. An example of how subjective criteria may be used is the newly adopted process to approve cannabis storefront selection by the Board of Supervisors. It includes an operations compatibility with the community. In China, this is referred to as a social credit score. Keeping citizens safe has proven to be a low priority for our state. We are a sanctuary state for criminals. Elected officials promote open borders to facilitate unhindered access to us for drugs, sex trafficking, and the gangster terrorist arm of the deep state enforcers. Unelected bureaucrats turned propositions forty-seven and fifty-seven billed as Safe Schools and Neighborhoods Act into vehicles to decriminalize sex crimes, assaults, theft, and more. Props forty-seven and fifty-seven wreak havoc for law enforcement who risk their lives to keep us safe. Heinous behavior is now categorized as a misdemeanor. Keep us safe? Schools fail to teach the most vulnerable youth to read or do math. Those kids emerge from school completely disenfranchised. The purpose for this mass surveillance is not public safety. The purpose is to monitor, reward those compliant, and punish dissenters. I oppose the installation of mass surveillance cameras. In addition, respectfully, I implore you to terminate the employment of those city administrators unnamed who facilitated this project and had set money aside for it. They don't want to keep us safe, they are tyrants.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Osborne, members of the City Council. My name is Ann McCarty, and I'm the Executive Director for the North County Rape Crisis and Child Protection Center. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you tonight. January has many observances from being National Blood Donor Month to National Oatmeal Month, to many other celebrations that folks might find important. But I want to draw your attention to a global and local crisis with January also being Human Trafficking Awareness Month. Human trafficking is an issue that is pervasive in our community, but few people talk about it. You should be proud that leaders in your community belong to the Santa Barbara County Human Trafficking Task Force that was formed in September 2014 out of the District Attorney's Office. None of us can do this work in a vacuum, and we had to unite with the task force. We engage and rely on the expertise that each entity brings to the table. It's a true collaborative effort as we work to assess the scope of the program locally, offer access to training opportunities, develop protocols, and improve law enforcement and victim service response. We are a group of organizations with the common goal of educating, intervening, advocating, and changing the landscape of trafficking. So just how bad is it? Well, in my opinion, and as I say this about any form of violence, one is too many. And human trafficking is a crime that knows no boundaries, and everyone, and I mean everyone, is at risk. In Santa Barbara County, from January 2017 to June 2019, there were a hundred and nineteen human trafficking investigations identifying a hundred and twenty-nine survivors that were conducted. Of those, a hundred and eleven were sex trafficking and eight were labor trafficking. Those investigations resulted in thirty-six prosecutions. In addition to the number of confirmed exploiters for human trafficking, seventy-one individuals were cited and arrested for solicitation of prostitution. Of those a hundred and twenty-nine survivors, partners in this work provided four thousand three hundred and eighty-nine units of service. Keep in mind that human trafficking is difficult to measure. Fear of harm to self or others, language barriers, lack of personal freedom, and fear of law enforcement often prevent victims from reporting their victimization or seeking services, so the number does have the potential to be much higher. So what does this mean to all of you on the City Council? It means that you need to do your part in promoting education and awareness surrounding human trafficking. Educate yourselves on the warning signs, know what the red flags are, engage with agencies that are making a difference in your community. The other critical piece to any of us getting a handle on this issue in our city is for you to support the local efforts of our Lompoc Police Department in the investigation and apprehension of exploiters in our city. Trust me when I say that exploiters are here, and they aren't the scary boogeyman that you might be imagining. They are individuals adept at grooming, saying the right things, promising the world, delivering presents, and making the victims feel something that we all want in life, to be loved. Exploiters set up in our local hotels, they work out of our apartment buildings, they live in the riverbed, and they just might be your neighbor. Trust me when I say that the men and women of the Lompoc Police Department want to clean up this issue, but they cannot do it without you backing them and you realizing their worth in the solution of this problem. It's time that we all work to change the trajectory of this insidious crime. We owe it to our future and the future of our children. Make human trafficking awareness a priority. Make the investigation of these types of crimes a priority. Give our officers a chance to be the change agents that they desire to be. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the council and my fellow citizens. Made the mistake of watching the news a few times. I saw what's going on in San Francisco. There's witness to the future of our community. Mostly it comes from people that we've elected telling us why they can't, coming up with why not? I'm against why not. I have always figured out how to. We, you know, when I was in the military, we improvised, we adapt, we overcome, that's what we do. I'm using a cane not because I was injured in some great heroic action, I just got old and I got arthritis. But I'm here. This the VA did to me, thank God, they saved my life. But why not will not save my life? Why not? Why we can't do something? Who cares? You know, somebody here mentioned that we needed translators. The people that come here want to speak English. English is the language of this community and of this state. Well, it used to be, it still is. The people on committees volunteer to be there. You don't even have to pay them, they'll show up. They will. You just gotta back them up in the things they suggest. Don't demand that they have translators for someone to speak to. I'll guarantee that young woman speaking here probably speaks some Spanish. She has a lovely accent. Even I speak a little Spanish. You can't do that. When people call the police department, the policeman or whoever answers that phone should answer with their last name and their badge number. That way, if they are inconsiderate, or braggadocious, or uncooperative with the person who's calling for help, because that's where you go, you go to the police for help. You don't go to some idiot, you go to the police, who are well-trained and well-organized. We need those cameras. The thought that that's an infringement on your citizenship is not true. It's something that the far-left came up with when they wanted to get away with the next crime. There's no expectation of privacy in public. Some people just don't care if they have any privacy. But I assure you, we need those cameras. You can start in a five-hundred block of, between G and F in that alley. There's a place, you see a lot of action there. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no one else rise, we will close oral communications and bring it back to the agenda. Council request, item number two, review of letters to be sent to Santa Barbara County requesting access to estuary and the California Department of Fish and Wildlife for modification to the Vandenberg Marine Preserve. And City Manager Trup will be presenting this information.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This was, this was a council request to bring back. We are in the process of writing two letters, one to the Santa Barbara County itself, more or less the Parks Department, and the other one is to the California Department of Fish and Wildlife. The first one we'll look at is the Santa Barbara County, well, let me go back to that one, the Fish and Wildlife. When we had everybody out on the beach, I think it was back in June, July, we had multiple agencies out there from federal, state, local, county, it was, it was pretty impressive to see how many people out there. The end result was, we ended up getting Surf Beach back open for the residents and people visiting our wonderful city. That hasn't happened in almost twenty years at this point. So that was the first step. The second step when we were out there was, we started discussing fishing that used to be allowed at the beach. So we talked, and we had the base, actually Vandenberg Base actually said, we can help you write a letter, we can help get the contacts. The Coastal Commission said, we'll do whatever we can, but they don't have the oversight. The oversight comes from the Fish and Wildlife for the state. So this letter is directed to them, the Fish and Wildlife Department for the state, requesting that the beach, and it's the same part of the beach that's open for the public now, basically that half-mile stretch of beach down at Surf Beach, to allow surf fishing again. And, you know, some comments I'd gotten back, we can make changes to the letter, that's the idea for bringing this up here, if you have any kind of comments for it. We can, we can add that to the letter before we send it off, and when we do, we're gonna be sending it not only to Fish and Wildlife, but we'll make sure we CC the base, Coastal Commission, everybody else that was part of that group, asking for access to the beach for fishing like we've done for many, many centuries. The second one was to the county, essentially to their Community Services Department. A lot of people that were here, growing up here, they know that you could, used to be able to water ski in the estuary, you could swim in the estuary, you could paddle in the estuary. So what we're asking them is not for access for the old, you know, the speedboats or something, but access, physical access for launching your paddleboard, your kayak, your canoe, what, you know, what have you. Because right now, if you go down to Ocean Park, we don't know where that launch pad might have been. It's all covered up either with rocks, ice plant, you name it, it's just not visible. So this letter is asking them to find some money in their parks funds or any other fund and appropriate that back to Ocean Park to add an access point. So the residents here and any visitors that come can go down, just like you see Morro Bay, if you've gone up to Morro Bay, they have people in the back all the time in the estuary doing paddleboards, stand-ups, sit-down, canoes, whatever it is. It's wonderful to be out there, there's a lot of wildlife out there to see. I think it's, it would be a great opportunity for everybody here. So that's what the second one is. So they're both written, I take no, you know, open it up and let me know what you want to see changed, and I'll be able to change that. This was more or less the first draft.
Thank you. Councilmember Starbuck.
You know, both of these entities right here, maybe we could end these letters with a PS, could you pay us for cleaning up the river?
Yeah.
Councilmember Vega.
Jim, that's, that's an excellent direction we'd love to see happen here. I was actually one of the people that actually swam in that lagoon and actually went water skiing in that lagoon once upon a time, and there was a little primitive boat ramp there. So I was here that long ago, and I know many of you, Mr. Homed, all of you guys have probably all probably experienced that. I don't remember any tragedies happening out there, but you know what, we were always having fun, we need something to have fun on. Has there been any thought to, I know we're not trying to bite off too much, you know, will they allow any kind of barbecuing at all or anything like that? I mean, that would be one thing, unless that's in the park area. I would say that if we do go with the expansion of that, and I would like to see the latter crafted, just as you stated, for the lagoon to be, or whatever you call that, estuary or, to be that the restrooms are there to accommodate anything we do also. I'm not sure what the path is to that, okay? If that's county or if that's outside the federal guidelines, you know what I mean?
The park itself is county. Surf Beach sits on the federal land, that's why they're involved with us.
Yeah, I got you.
Some people had said, well, you know, with the estuary, maybe, you know, they have the base land on the other side of the, of the water. I have talked to the commanders at the base, and they said, no problem for us, you can, someone could swim across today if they really wanted.
Yeah, I would, I would fully support that. I think the only way that they could probably get people not to go was to lock the bathrooms.
Yeah.
Get it, and that's another tactic, but anyway, that's why I brought that up.
The other one I forgot to mention, this is not happening today, but the base is actually, is one of the other great things about the opening of Surf Beach. They're gonna be working on a plan engineering it to put from Ocean Park, it'll go, you go under the trestle, and from that portion, there'll be a raised boardwalk, so it takes people up and out, it'll be ADA compliant, so you can easily get there, anybody can walk from their back to Surf Beach.
Even the beaches, huh? The beaches are going ADA also, huh? That's tough, isn't it?
Well, that, you know, that entrance from the, from the train station is pretty steep, so this one, this will get people back over there in a much easier slope than it would before. So that's something they're working on now. They couldn't give a timeline, is it this year or next year, but they will be actually funding that out of their bank account.
Yeah, well, thank you. I fully support those additions also, so I'll let someone else talk.
Any more questions or comments to the City Manager before we open it for public comment? Seeing none, we'll thank you and open this for public comment. If you'd like to speak on this matter, you have three minutes.
Deb Andrews, Mission Hills. I am so grateful to see this happening for our community, the quality of life and especially for the young people here. They really need activities outside. This is wonderful. My greatest memories visiting my granny in Aptos was surf fishing. I'm just, I'm just very excited that you're pursuing this, and I want to thank you very much.
Thank you.
Kim, resident of Lompoc, Kimberly Coy. I grew up here too and played in the water out there all my childhood and learned how to swim, I got thrown out into surf, first time ever in the water. So I was sad not to be able to take my daughter out there and fishing out there with my friend, with my brother's, well, chosen brother's dad. We used to go out there a lot, and I have such great memories, and it would be so awesome to be able to do that again. Thanks.
Thank you.
John Lynn, once again. So I'm here to thank all of the residents of the city of Lompoc who took the time to put their three thousand signatures on the petitions that Mr. Mosby and I took to the Coastal Commission. I want to thank the mayor for taking her time to go to the Coastal Commission meeting in Oxnard. I was there too, but you got there first and they canceled it, that was great. I apologize to people that signed this one, I found This one, I found it in a business today and it hadn't gotten picked up. So it was a great community effort, it was a great effort by the council and the staff to move this forward. I wanted to say, with regard to the letter, it says, "Lompoc was established in 1888", that's actually when the city was incorporated. In the mayor's office, you'll find a tile that says, "Town of Lompoc, 1872," if I remember correctly. So we ought to change our letter and take credit for the amount of time we've been here. With regard to that nascent boat ramp, I actually know where it is. And up until 10 years ago, you could see a little bit of it. I would just be delighted to walk out there with a shovel and uncover the end of it. And, you know, the county always says they don't have money. So, I hereby stand before you and offer that I will raise the money to put the boat ramp back in, or uncover what's there and finish the rest of it. And we'll have it back, all the county has to do is nod their head up and down and say yes. So, no, 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 no.
I'm sorry, there's no cheering, clapping, or booing during council discussions or public comment.
So, and I suspect that I would see all five of you out there with a shovel together if we could have this opportunity. So, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Nicholas Gonzalez, resident of Lompoc. I'm here to support the letter, just like everyone else. I got very fond memories from fishing with my grandma, to fishing with my father and uncles and everybody going out there and just having fun. I remember, we used to have tour buses come in with a bunch of Japanese tour buses from Los Angeles would come down, and they would bring like 50 people packed up and they'd go fishing out there. And so there was, you know, people from all over came and enjoyed that surf fishing. Now that we have that designation though, I have a little twist, I'm going to ask you to put some big monument signs along Ocean Avenue and H Street saying, "Beach, five minutes." You know, we are now, have a beach in our backyard, and I think that's a huge selling point for people who are coming. Every time I bring friends from Southern California or Northern California that come from the urban concrete jungle, they are just amazed by the beauty of Surf Beach. They're just taken back. I mean, I have them and it's just something that you don't get to experience in Southern California where, you know, everything is developed all the way down to the sand. So, send the letter and then figure a way that we can put some monument signs advertising that we have a beach. Thank you.
Thank you.
Happy New Year. I am in support of the letter for the estuary and opening it up and bringing back activities there. I'd like to thank the City Manager for his hard work in putting this together. Mr. Mosby, Mayor Osborne, thank you for what you've done. This has really brought the community together. We've seen stickers on bumpers, cars, on signs, on Ocean Avenue. People really want to see access to the beach, and well, we have it now, are very happy that access to the beach has been opened. One of the things that was mentioned previously as justification for opening it was the economical impact that the closure of the beach had on the city. I think that, as Mr. Gonzalez stated here, advertising of the beach, but one thing came to mind is that we have this thing called Highway One, and it comes right through our town, and it's actually called the Pacific Coast Highway. But we wouldn't know that, anyone living in Lompoc or outside of Lompoc wouldn't know that because it doesn't say it anywhere. We've kind of had like, a little bit of a crisis with our identity here in Lompoc for several years. It began, who knows when, but I'm sure that the space shuttle program leaving had a lot to play with that. The closure of our beach, our missions, we have so much going on here, and yet we don't know what we are, what we want to be, what we want to do. I just think that we need to continue to do what we're doing, and that's to do what they say we can't do. They say we couldn't open our beach, we'd never get it back. They said we'd never be in the estuary again, but here we are talking about it. So 2020 is a new year, a new decade, and a chance for new opportunities. And I think that it would be great if the city started to promote the things that we have here, the things that we got going. Let's talk about promoting the name of things that are landmarks here, like the Pacific Coast Highway. We could add that to the signs. We can do more to create the essence that we're a beach community. We could put lots of things in here, we can do it. So I support, I support it, and I'm thankful for it, and I'm thankful for everyone here. Thank you.
Seeing no one else rise, we will close public comment and bring it back to council. Councilmember Mosby.
Cruising through pictures of pictures, I had a picture of 1940's Surf Beach, where the people actually backed right in, and the whole thing was a launch ramp. So, don't have, it was a picture of a picture, so I don't know about a copyright component or whatever on it, but, you know. So, it even had cabins you could rent down there in the summertime, if you believe that. I'll show you where it was, where I found that on the web. Yeah, I've been working on the estuary for years, and the momentum going forward and the thousands of signatures of City Managers' support, the mayor's supporting and stuff, and the many people pushing the momentum moving forward on here. Just a couple of things with the letters, those recommendations that I would have answering into the county parks, I think we can take out that one paragraph about not finding a picture, I think that this would suffice to show that it used to be wide open and we drove into there. So, having that paragraph taken out, I think would be, and then, in the letter going to the state for the fishing component, the, I've gone before Fish and Wildlife a couple times, and you don't really want to show a negativity component, but I don't think having in there reducing down the fishing limit to four, I don't think we should have that in there, they already have limits on there, we shouldn't, I believe it's 10 for the sand perch, I don't think we need to even say anything about that, take that paragraph out. But there was also mention at the Coastal Commission meeting, and that was petition to the state to change from a state marine preserve and have it for certain species to be looked at as a conservation for those certain species, not a preserve, and maybe limiting it to the sand perch and the take of sand perch and sand crab, since a lot of people use the sand crab, sketch the sand perch. And I think that would be an easier angle to go out if we looked at it, at that viewpoint, and that was, I believe it was a Fish and Wildlife, State Fish and Wildlife gentleman who said that that would be an easier angle to get to, is if you found it on a certain species and kept it on that, and since the sand perch, there's a plethora of them around, it would be easier for us to accomplish if we had more specifics on that point. So that would be my recommendation for potential changes.
Councilmember Vega.
And I'll give you a second on that one, I like that recommendation, if that's where we're there at. But I think I like those changes and the fact that you noted about the protecting certain species, we don't need that, the limits are already limited by fishing game, so we don't need to get involved with that either. So that would be my second for that motion.
Any other questions, additions, concerns? We have a motion, I believe, I didn't hear it be made into a motion, so we're just assuming it was. And a second?
And a second, as long as, again, we're including the lagoon in all this, is what you were clarifying there, right? Is that correct? Okay, thank you. So that's a second.
Okay. Seeing no additional discussion, we'll take a vote. And that passes 5-0. Next item, three, revision to record retention destruction policy to create procedures for indexing and verification of electronically stored city records, and adoption of resolution number 6297, parentheses 20. And our city attorney, Jeff Malave, will make the presentation.
Evening, Mayor and Council. This item tonight is at the request of Councilmember Cordova. As you know, under state law, there is a required retention period for every different type of record that we have in City Hall. State law requires us to retain that record for a certain period of time, and then we may destroy the record, as long as that destruction is approved by the city attorney and also approved by the city council. There's an alternative process, however, under state law that allows the city to destroy the physical record before the required retention period and also without city attorney or council approval, if the city makes an electronic copy of the record and then keeps that electronic And on October 15th, city council requested staff to prepare a policy stating that if at any time the city makes electronic copies of records in order to be able to destroy the physical copy, as I just described, then those electronic copies of the records must be on an index, index to afford the public and the staff to easily know what has been electronically copied, and also that a department head must certify in writing and by signature that the index is accurate and that the records have been properly electronically copied. Resolution 629720 is a resolution that does just that. It's actually an amendment to our records retention schedule that the council adopted in 2016. With that, I'm available for questions, and that concludes the staff report.
Councilmember Mosby.
If a video was part of the record, could they digitize the video, then that would be stored without coming to back us for destruction?
If we're talking about a VHS tape, I think that would need to be digitized and kept on some kind of a computer file, and then they could destroy the VHS tape without coming to you. But if it's a video that's already in electronic form, then there's nothing to destroy, as long as we keep the electronic copy.
Councilmember Cordova.
So, the main reason, going back to when this issue arose was, in my opinion, was the accountability of making sure that if we're going to destruct any public record, that there be a formal process for somebody ensuring that it was digitized and not just said, "Oh, we did it," and then later to find out that, you know, we were missing the information. In reviewing the information on the staff report, I completely agree with the revision to the resolution that was already in place. And I just noted when I was reviewing this that Government Code Section 34090.5 specifically states caution is recommended to ascertain digital copy is accessible before destroying hard copy. So, I kind of felt like that was a validation that we, that that was something that we needed to do. In reviewing also the records retention schedule, it does states that minutes in all meetings are P for permanent, but, so I just wanted to make sure that this portion doesn't cover video of meeting minutes, it just covers the actual meeting minutes as typed up or written, correct?
It'd be a physical copy of the meeting minutes.
Right.
Is what we could, as long as we made an electronic copy of that physical copy of the meeting minutes, then we could destroy the physical copy. Video is required to be kept forever in electronic form per the council's current policy.
Right. But it's not really, it's not being covered in this right now, correct?
I mean, I guess my answer to that is the same as Councilmember Mosby's. If we had a VHS tape of old council meetings, then we could destroy that as long as we made an electronic copy. But current council meetings are already digitally recorded and digitally stored, so there's not really anything to throw away. So, so no, this policy wouldn't apply to those videos that are already digitally recorded.
Okay. And again, the reason why I make, I don't want to say a big deal about it, is because it's my understanding that we are missing some videos from prior council meetings, and so for that reason, I just, I don't know where's the accountability on those, and when did they go missing, or why did they go missing, and how do we fix that moving forward?
You and I had a-
I just want to fix it moving forward.
Yeah, you and I had some correspondence about this today, and the reason that I stated that is because we have some of our council videos on YouTube, we may store them in other areas as well, but we do have some on YouTube. And I noticed that there may have been some that are not uploaded to YouTube from a few years ago. Our policy is to keep all videos of council meetings permanently, but not necessarily on YouTube, somewhere, somewhere, keep them permanently. So I'm assuming that we follow that policy.
Okay.
Mayor, if I may, I can follow up with our IT department. We place it up on YouTube because it is large to keep it here in the volume of the video, so it's easier to get it up onto YouTube. But I'll follow up with our IT manager to make sure that everything is, that's being recorded, digitized, however you want to say it, is somewhere in the city. So if something wasn't showing up, say, on the website, I'm pretty sure it's somewhere, it just may not, it may have fallen off and the link might have disappeared or something, but I will follow up and find out if the video is still available. And then we'll have to find out which ones, if we can, which ones might be missing.
Any more questions for the city attorney or staff before we open for public comment? Seeing none, thank you. And we will now open this for public comment. You have three minutes if you would like to speak on the issue.
I was encouraged to hear the city attorney say that we retained our video records because it's not on this, on the records retention schedule, Exhibit D. Perhaps it should be added, I'm not sure that you can undertake that at this time, but I would hope one of you would ask. I also noticed on the records retention that the agenda and staff reports are retained for the current year plus two. That has not been our city policy over the long haul, and if you go to the website, you can find them going back many years, so I certainly hope we're not contemplating deleting all those. With regard to the video, I would say one other thing. We had an occasion a while back where the video that was online did not fully reflect what went on in the meeting. I have a great deal of concerns about things that go online because they can be manipulated. The policy some time ago when I was mayor was that a CD was made and given to the city clerk and retained in city records for each meeting. I hope that's still going on, and if it's not, that's what needs to happen, because that CD is the accurate record. Once it goes out into the world, you don't have control of it anymore. Thank you.
Seeing no one else rise, we will close discussion on this and bring it back to council. Any other questions, motion? Councilmember Mosby.
So maybe the city attorney can tell me where the council meetings, where does it say, "Permanent" for the recording?
That is a policy for the videos you're talking about.
Yeah.
That's a policy that's in the council handbook, that's not in this records retention schedule, but we could add it to the records retention schedule.
Okay. And about the agendas and staff reports, what's, C plus two is all we need on that? I mean, it's nice to have those, you think they would line up with the meeting. What have we been doing in the past?
I think our official rule is two years, but I think we keep the agendas and staff reports for far longer. Is that right, Stacy?
Yes, we keep them-
Excuse me, using your microphone.
We keep them much longer. Currently, we have, I believe, back to 1970 in the vault.
So maybe we should reflect what we're doing with that, it's more of a permanent policy?
Those are all hard copies, and we have scanned them.
But I'm talking about what we're moving forward with. If that's what we're doing, if we're keeping them basically permanently, maybe we should change that component of it here.
Currently, though, previously, they, the staff reports and agendas were typewritten, they were not electronically filed. We currently have electronic files for agendas and staff reports.
But the way it's written- But the way it's written here, if I can ask the city attorney, that means we don't have to keep it for current plus two.
First, I'd like to ask the city clerk to, did you accidentally turn down the microphone volume? Okay. I think what Councilmember Mosby's asking is to make our policy consistent with our practice. So if we're keeping staff reports for a long time, we might as well make the policy say Yes, we can do that. Technically, this is not on the agenda tonight, so if we wanna make these changes to the record retention policy, we can bring that back in the future.
My only concern about keeping agendas permanently in hard copy is that there's a lot of space that needs to be used, a lot of space.
And it's the minutes that we're required to keep, and those are a reflection of the agenda once they're completed. So I don't think we need to keep agendas because the minutes reflect the agenda. So you're, you're keeping two copies.
Yeah. My suggestion would be that if, if agendas and staff reports are to be kept permanently, that we keep them electronically.
Oh, absolutely.
But the hard copies, again, not only do they take up a lot of space in our vault, but they also take up a lot of space in my office and my OSA's office and the office space around both of our offices. So that's my concern.
So for clarity, Councilmember Mosby, are you asking for the change to be permanent for the electronic version of agendas and staff reports? Are you asking for the printed version? I think that's what she's-
Electronic is what I'm referencing.
And when you say electronic version, you're talking about the actual final agenda, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Which is a little overpriced, but that'd have to come back, correct?
That would have to come back, but if what you're concerned about is just us keeping an electronic copy, I think that's our, that is what we do. But if you wanted to put that in the policy, then that would have to come back.
Guess I could make the motion to approve as, but, although it was Councilmember Cordova's, I don't know if you had any, if you wanted to motion it.
Councilmember Cordova, if Mr. Mosby is yielding the floor.
Well, I just, when I hear that's, I think that's what we're doing, or that is probably what we're doing, it just makes me nervous because I think there should be a written procedure for it. And in the year that I've been sitting on this chair, I've seen a lot of finger pointing, and so in my opinion, if there's a well-written procedure and we're actually following it, then staff doesn't have to be, doesn't have to have the finger pointed at them that there's some kind of conspiracy going on that we eliminated these documents. And so that's all I'm trying to do, is let's make life easier for everyone. If the procedure is written correctly, we shall all follow it, and then there's no problem.
Councilmember Mosby.
I'll make the motion to approve, and as well as to have the staff report come back with the two items of discussion.
I will second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Any clarification for, yes, that's what I thought. What are the two items specifically that you wanna, we wanna make sure they were recorded properly?
To identify that we're holding it as permanent for the meetings and as well digitally, the agendas and staff reports moving forward.
Okay, so digitization of the videos themselves, those are permanent, as well as the agendas and staff reports, correct? Okay, thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Cordova.
One more question. I thought we weren't discussing video, because I thought video was not part of this.
We have a current policy in the council handbook that we have to keep council meeting videos forever. Councilmember Mosby is just requesting a future agenda item to add that to the record retention schedule as well.
Roger.
Okay. All right. Staff's clear? Nods, okay, heads are nodded. Any other questions or concerns before we vote? Cordova was the second. Okay. Let's vote. And that passes 5-0. Item number four is amendment to the Lompoc Municipal Code to Standardize Appeal Procedures and Appeal Timelines and Introduction of Ordinance Number 1673 (20). Again, City Attorney Jeff Malave.
Good evening again, mayor and council. As you may recall, on August 20th, the council considered a staff report describing all of the various appeal procedures that were in the Lompoc Municipal Code. The council wanted to review what all those procedures were and how appeals work under the code. Following a discussion at that meeting, the council directed city attorney's office to bring back, and this was on Councilmember Vega's motion, if I remember correctly, to bring back a staff report to standardize the appeal procedures under the municipal code, including standardizing the deadlines for applicants, members of the public, to file appeals of city decisions. So that staff report is before you tonight. We have drafted a draft ordinance that follows council direction to give appellant's 20 business days to file an appeal of any city decision with certain exceptions that I'm going to talk about in a few minutes. Council also wanted that notices of decisions need to provide the applicant or the member of the public with information about their right to appeal and how that appeal process And council also directed that my office look into whether a two-track appeal timeline would work for planning and zoning decisions, appeals of planning commission decisions to the city council, where the deadline would be 10 business days for, for decisions that are favorable to a development applicant and 20 business days for decisions that are not favorable to the applicant. So, like I said, we've developed this draft ordinance, and it does the following things. It creates a new section of the municipal code, Chapter 1.32, that outlines an appeals process that will apply to all appeals under the code, rather than having a number of different appeals processes listed throughout the code that are all different. The draft ordinance does require that city decisions that can be appealed be made in writing, and that that written decision contain a notice of the right to appeal and also clearly state the procedures and the deadlines for filing the appeal. The ordinance, the draft ordinance, does have a section that states the appellant will pay a fee for filing the appeal and having the appeal heard. But currently, under the city's fee schedule, the only fees that are currently adopted are planning department fees, appeals of the planning director's decision to the planning commission, and then appeals of planning commission decisions to the council. Both have a, I believe it's $257 fee, and those are the only fees that exist right now. So even if you adopt this ordinance, there won't be any new fees unless the council would decide to adopt some new fees. Council also asked my office to look into whether it's possible to say that if an appellant pays that fee to appeal and then they win their appeal, could the city reimburse the appeal fee? And the answer to that is yes. So if you would like us to add that to the ordinance, you can give us that direction tonight. That's currently not in the ordinance. And then also, the main standardization is the time deadline to file an appeal. The ordinance would change, the draft ordinance would change it to 20 business days, not 20 calendar days, but 20 business days, and that would be the standard appeal deadline throughout the code for all appeals with a few exceptions. So page three of the staff report goes through what appeals are not being changed for various reasons. And the first set of appeals that are not being changed in this draft ordinance are appeals under the zoning code. The only reason for that is because amendment to the zoning code has to go through the planning commission first. So if the council wanted to increase the appeal deadline in the zoning code from currently, it is 10 calendar days, if you wanted to increase that to 20 business days to make it consistent with the rest of the municipal code, you can give us that direction tonight, and we'll bring that to the planning commission, and it eventually will come to you. Also, if you wanted to direct us to present to the planning commission that two-track appeal process under the zoning code for planning decisions where the deadline to appeal is shorter if a developer's application is approved, 10 business days, say, and then the regular 20 business days if a development application or any other planning decision is denied, you could give us that direction tonight as well. Another kind of appeal that is not changed in the draft ordinance is wastewater ordinance appeals. Appeals under the wastewater ordinance currently have a 15-business-day deadline. If you wanted to change that to 20 days, 20 business days to be consistent with the rest of the code, that would need to be approved by the regional board because essentially any amendment to our wastewater ordinance has to first be approved by the regional board. So you could give that direction tonight. I think if you did give that direction, we would probably put that change in with the rest of the comprehensive amendments to our wastewater ordinance that we're gonna be presenting to the regional board soon anyway. So that would, could just be another one, is adding five business days onto the appeal Subdivision MAP Act appeals are actually governed by state law, so we cannot change those. Appeals of planning commission decisions about subdivision maps have a 10 calendar-day appeal deadline, and that's state law. And then appeals of denials of time extension requests on subdivision maps have a 15-day, 15 calendar-day appeal period, and we cannot change that. Three other types of appeals under the code are not being changed, and that's based on feedback that we receive from the various departments at City Hall. So the first one is bid protests. These are on page four of the staff report regarding the award of a contract when the city goes out to bid. So that process requires a bid protester to file a protest if they have a concern with the city's bid documents within five days after the documents are issued. And also, and that's five business days, sorry. And then also, the deadline currently in the code to file a protest of the city's decision to award a contract after a bid process is five business days. And staff is not recommending those be changed because it would delay the city's purchasing process and delay our ability to enter into public works contracts and purchases of supplies and services if we had to wait 20 business days instead of five business days in order to get started on work after we enter into a contract. Second-to-last item is DUI cost recovery. Under the current municipal code, cities allowed to recover the cost of responding to a DUI from the person who was involved in the DUI, the violator. And that currently under the code, the appeal deadline is 30 calendar days, and finance department is recommending that that stay 30 calendar days and not be changed to 20 business days because 30 days is the industry standard to collect on the payment. So not only is the appeal deadline 30, 30 calendar days, but also the deadline to pay the city after we send the bill is 30 calendar days. And then lastly, when we revoke fireworks permits for the sale of fireworks, the appeal deadline for that revocation is five calendar days. And staff thought that expanding that to be 20 business days would given the time that fireworks, the time period that fireworks are sold, essentially during those 20 business days, it may be the end of fireworks sales season. So staff is recommending that the five-day appeal deadline for a revocation be kept in the code. Additionally, as we were going through the code on this, we noticed that there are a number of places in the municipal code where it still calls the city manager, the city administrator, and business tax certificates are still called business tax receipts. So what we also did is we cleaned up all of those locations in the code where the incorrect name is used for those two items. The draft ordinance is attached to the staff report. Staff's, so I guess, staff's recommendation is to just consider whether you would like to introduce this ordinance tonight, and then also decide whether to give direction to bring an amendment back to the planning commission to similarly amend the zoning code, and also whether to include in our comprehensive update to the wastewater ordinance, we're gonna submit that to the regional water quality control board, whether you would like the appeal period to be changed in that as well, to 20 business days. That does conclude the staff report.
Thank you. Councilmember Vega.
So if you could reclarify the going to the planning commission for me again, and how that affects the timeframes if we send it to the planning commission instead of just directly doing that, if you wouldn't mind?
Right. Thank you for asking that. Tonight, you can adopt the changes for all the parts of the code except the zoning code and the wastewater ordinance. So if you want to do that, you can make all those changes tonight, but then for the appeal deadlines that are in the zoning code, you can't do those tonight. We have to take those to the planning commission first. So there's no delay on the rest of the code, it's only a delay on the zoning code.
Okay. Yeah, I think that would be the direction that I would probably support. The other one would be the wastewater ordinance. I would actually support something that says, make it 20 business days, which would mean as the option, as the alternative, but it means it has to go to the water board now, is what you're saying, okay, for their approval, okay?
It would have to go to the water board, but we're taking an update to the ordinance to the water board anyways.
Okay, so we can update that. The other one is the, okay, I got the state law part, the DUI cost per city, okay? I have a question here. It's like, if somebody gets in trouble here, I mean, is that a cost that's covered by insurance, or is the city planning on running after someone for money, okay? And I was, you know, I remember the fire department one time introduced a fee schedule that said if someone was to get in a car wreck and they had to go do a cleanup of spills or something, somebody had notified them that it was actually a cost that could be sent to whoever was in trouble, to their insurance coverage per their car insurance. This seems to me like, I could see the cost recovery part, but I can see the other part of it, if it's not an insurance claim by the city, then what are we doing? You know what I mean? It seems like you would have to go after that money somehow, or you'd have to be in some sort of a collection phase. I remember one time that we did this with utilities, and utilities, one of the reasons they increased deposits and everything was because their recovery for people that didn't pay was, was not doing very well. So it was just an extra cost. So I'm not sure if you have that answer, Jeff, you know, if it is something that has insurance coverage by people that might get in a wreck or something or get in DUI.
I think that may depend on what the individual's insurance policy is, but I think what we would do as the city is when someone is in, someone has a DUI, if we have to undertake an emergency response with our police or fire, we charge those costs to the person that had the DUI, and then if their insurance covers it, then it covers it, but if it doesn't, then we try to collect from the individual.
They're gonna move away, right? They're gonna move away from Lompoc, right? Okay, but I get it. Thank you for that answer. The next one would be the fireworks permit revocation. I see the other alternative, which I actually like that one better. It's, you know, if someone was to 20 business days, but their revocation is actually to be, take effect immediately, I think that would standardize the 20-day thing that we're doing as far as timeframe. So that's under the firework permit revocation. So it says here- So it says here for an appeal within 20 business days, but it says another option we make, the revocation going to effect immediately. So if someone was actually, their permit was taken away, they get 20 days, but they still can't do business. I think the 20 days being standard, I think is what we're striving to do to, to maintain some sort of standardization of the timeframes.
Okay, that, that is another option that's written in the staff report.
Right.
If you wanted the revocation of the fireworks permit to take effect immediately, then, then yes, we could do that.
Yeah, I think that's a safety item there that everyone's looking for to make sure that someone that has, has had their permit revoked can't still continue to do business pending the appeal process. So, those are my comments, but I think that's, those are the things I would support because they're alternatives to the staff recommendations.
Okay.
Councilmember Cordova.
So I, I do agree with the staff recommendations on all, on the proposed ordinance. In regards to the exceptions, with number one being the planning and number two being the wastewater, I actually think that it's not necessary to change these. I think the issue when it arose was because when people were receiving letters that said, hey, you know, no, you can't, and they weren't being told, well, what their options were. And I feel like the ordinance is fixing that. It's giving, it's giving them a letter that states you have the right to appeal, here's the steps for appeal, and here's your timeline. So why do we need to change something when the issue wasn't necessarily that? It was, because going to the, to the, to the Regional Water Board, to me, that's unnecessary when, where I felt a lot of the issues that were coming to the dais were, I didn't know and I wasn't told and I wasn't given the opportunity. So in my opinion, I don't think that those need to be changed. I think that the ordinance, the draft ordinance covers that.
Councilmember Starbuck.
Well, I'm, I'm going to go out of line here. I think Councilmember Mosby had a reply to that, but at what point, Jeff, would you like to deal with the fee reimbursement for successful appeals?
We could do that right now?
I'll bring it up in a minute.
Okay.
Councilmember Mosby.
So originally, when I brought the appeals component together, it was, I think I sat down with the city attorney and we're trying to analyze different components of appeal. And the city was all over the place, from five days to 30 days and everything in between. So trying to get a layer of consistency here, and that's why the last time we brought it up, we discussed and we figured the 20-day component. That way we know where we're coming from and trying to make everything much the same. So we already have to go take something up to the, the, the board. So that's already moving forward. We could put that in line already. It's a process, just to try to keep everything the same. It's, it's, it was such a guessing game that was out there on what the length of time before the appeal was. And trying to get as many of them around the 20-day, I think would be great. I mean, we have a couple, only have five out of, what, maybe 60 different appeals components that would be out of line with that. So that was the original discussion for it was to aligning the 20-day component. But I think we do have a $65 fee in there on the Housing Appeals Board. I remember reading it somewhere deep in our archives somewhere in one of the ordinances.
Okay, well, then that one got by me if we didn't.
So, yeah, I was trying to find it. I didn't get it, but I believe we have one out there already.
Councilmember Cordova.
So just for clarification, because I'm, I thought I read on the staff report that these items are exceptions because they're regulated by state law.
Some are.
Some are. The, the subdivision MAP Act is?
Unless otherwise explicitly provided by Long Hook Municipal Court or required by state law, all notices of appeal would be, to be filled. So I understood that everybody under the exception were items that were, you know, that already had a state mandate and so we would have to go toward, to, you know, in this case, the Regional Water Board and request a change to that. And I do understand that we were trying to get a standardized, I, I voted for that too. But that was the only thing that I thought, the main issue was that people weren't being told of their right to appeal and how do we do it and how do we communicate that? And so that was my reason for saying, if we don't need to change it, why change it? That wasn't really the underlying issue that we were dealing with a few months ago.
For clarification to anyone in the public, item number one in the exceptions is something we can change. Unfortunately, it has to go back to the Planning Commission for discussion, recommendation, and then come back to us. So we would send it to them in order to bring it up to 20 business days. The wastewater is the one that we set originally at 15 business days and got approved with Regional Water. So the fact that we already have a report and request going back to them, it could be attached. It wouldn't be in addition to anything that we aren't already taking to them. And then the subdivision MAP Act is state mandated. The bid protest is an internal that is a standard that staff didn't recommend changing. Same with the DUI. And the fireworks, I, I'm okay with the other option of immediate revocation and allowing the 20 business days. It just doesn't allow them to reopen if we don't get to it. So the five days was actually more of like an internal saying, hey, you only have five days because that makes sure we get to it in that five-day window. So if you had your permit revoked as a firework seller, within those five days, we could evaluate it and potentially give it back to you and still get a couple of days of the sale. If it's at 20 days, they're not going to potentially get their certificate back in time to get any sales done. It means they potentially could qualify next year, but they're in the drawing for it again next year. So I, I honestly think that's one that should be left at five days because it gives the opportunity for the firework permit to be assessed and evaluated and potentially given back within the week's window of selling fireworks. Because I think it's, what, seven days currently that they sell? It starts on and ends a week later, seven days almost exactly, ending on July 4th.
I don't know off the top of my head, but.
I, I want to say. I see a head nodding, who was part of the original writing of that. So I think that's why it, it, it's to the benefit of the permit holder who has it revoked to leave it at five days. So that would be the one I would disagree with. Councilmember Cordova.
So one more question regarding the planning and land use. So the staff report notes too that if we went to a two-track approach, there would be 10 days for the applicant to be able to file their appeal, but then anyone opposing would have, or sorry, there would be 20 days for the applicant to be able to file their appeal, but then anybody opposing the project would only get the 10 days. And, and there was a caution to the council to consider that. I would not recommend that. I don't think it's fair to limit the people that would be opposing a particular project 10 days less than anyone that is doing the project. So I wouldn't agree with a two-track system. If we could leave it at the 10 days or the 20 days for everyone, whatever, you know, then that would be better than a two-track system. That would make it unfair for the population.
Okay. Any more questions or clarifications from staff? Thank you. Seeing none, we'll open to public comment on this item.
John Lynn, once again, you're probably tired of listening to me, but I promise this is the last time. You know, I think when the council launched this, none of us had any idea how much work this was going to be. I did read the entire document. I want to compliment the, the city attorney and the staff that worked with him. They did an outstanding job and I don't think any of us realized how many conflicts we had. And the approach he took also dramatically simplified it rather than listing the same thing in 101 places. It's listed in one place and referred back to. I believe we, we should seek the Regional Board's approval to change it to 20 days, again, to be consistent and number two, because these particular, what I call them, violations are again, generally against small businesses. And it takes a few days for a small business to find somebody that can tell them what they need to do and help them through it. The, I believe that having the successful applicant get their fee back is more than fair. I believe the zoning code changes should be referred to the Planning Commission. Once again, we're trying to be consistent. Let's take that all the way through with Councilmember Cordova. I certainly oppose a two-track process where one group of people is, is treated more favorably than the other. And I am very familiar with the bid process. Since 2008, I recall that there was one time when there was a conflict with the current process and it was equitably resolved, so I certainly wouldn't want to change that. And I believe that supporting the staff's recommendation and leaving the fireworks appeal at five days would certainly be appropriate. I was involved in writing that and a lot of consideration went into that. So I hope you will approve this and adopt the changes. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Seeing no one else rise, we will close public comment on this matter and bring it back. Councilmember Vega.
I, I too, after listening to this two-part process here with the planning, it does seem to present some sort of an issue here. It's, it sounds like, Jeff, it, it's required that it goes back to the Planning Commission or it's not required for a zoning code amendment?
Any amendment to the zoning code has to go through the Planning Commission first before it comes to council.
And I see what Councilwoman Cordova was saying, that we have 10 days here and then the other part was changing. And we're just trying to look for some sort of standardization, but if it doesn't work and it's unfair to one side, I think that would be an issue for me also. So I think I'd probably like to, maybe you, again, you could clarify, that 10 days is going to work. Can you give me one more scenario of, of a 10-day, even if it goes to the Planning Commission?
Are you asking about the two-track process with?
The two-track process, yes, sir.
Okay.
And what if we don't have the two-track process or what if we do? And how does that work again? Okay, just for my clarification.
If we do not have the two-track process, then the appeal deadline is always 20 business days regardless of what the decision is. The concern that was raised with that at the last time we came here in August about this was that when a Planning Commission approval is made, in order for the developer to start working on the project, they have to wait until the appeal period expires. So they're going to be waiting 20 business days in order to be able to take the next step on their project. And that's why it was suggested maybe at the last meeting that if a, if a developer's project is approved, you could reduce their, the appeal deadline for that to 10 business days, but then still have it be 20 if the development is denied. That would speed up the process of getting the development built, but it would also shorten the appeal deadline for any members of the public who might be opposed to that project. So that's the give and take on that. And we, in the draft ordinance, we just left it at, well, we don't have the zoning code in the draft ordinance, but the, we were going to leave it at 20 days for everything just to be standardized unless we got direction otherwise from the council.
But it's a negative to the developer moving forward is what you're saying, the extra 10 days. Is that correct?
It makes them wait 10 extra business days before they can take the next step on their project.
And, and that's the way it is? It's not that way currently, correct?
Currently, they have to, if their permit is approved, their development application is approved, they have to wait until the end of the appeal period. But the appeal period currently is only 10 calendar days.
Got you, got you. I just had to have you say it one more time, but I got it. I got you now, okay? And moving forward, I still think the wastewater, the ordinance, you know, it's got to go to wastewater. Doesn't it go to the Water Board anyway, I believe? Or do we have to go to the Water Board at all if we make those changes, Jeff?
If you want to change the appeal deadline in the wastewater ordinance, that has to go through the Water Board before it comes to council.
And, and the reason we would do that is to standardize timeframes? Is there, that would basically be it, right?
Yeah.
We're trying to put as many on a 20-day cycle as?
Yes.
As much as we can.
Right now, it's 15 business days, but if you wanted to increase that to 20 business days?
Okay, well, that's, that's not a big deal there, I guess, but also, but the fireworks thing and the DUI thing, that was my only question. But the fireworks thing, if there's an explanation, and I heard that the five days is adequate, I don't know if anybody ever gets a permit revoked and they get it back, okay? I don't know that, okay? That, that might be one scenario, but I doubt it. Does that make sense?
It makes sense, and I don't know the answer to that either because I've never had that happen during my tenure, but.
Yeah, so, so I would, I guess we're here, are we here to make a motion or we're not?
So my suggestion is that we quickly go through both sections and identify where we agree and then formalize that into a motion. Because I know we each have individual opinions on this and I think to clarify it, we could easily go through the proposed ordinance, numbers one through five, and see where there's agreement or disagreement and any changes and then go through the exceptions pretty quickly.
Got you, I got you.
Because we've expressed, we just need to, to unify that and then, once we've had that discussion, make a complete motion about which ones to send forward and which ones to keep back.
I got you, because after getting it re-clarified like three times.
So, my proposal is to look at the first five. So we have expand the general appeals provision. I believe most of us agree on that. Any disagreement on number one? Okay. Number two is the required notice of right to appeal and instructions for the filing appeal. Any disagreements on that? Number three, require fee for appeal and if we have a fee about returning it, if this appeal is successful. Councilmember Starbuck.
Yeah, I would like to lean towards the, the reimbursement for a successful appeal.
I concur with that. Anyone else have any questions about that? Okay. And number four, require written notice of appeal. Any conflicts or disagreement there? And establishing the 20-business-day uniform timeline for what we are currently looking at. We'll go to the exceptions next, but the 20-business days for the ordinance.
I was going to say, I concur with that unless we change something coming up here.
Okay. So we've got agreement on that first section. So now we'll go to the next section. And what I have heard, and, and let me run through this, is that there is support for sending the 20-business days back to the Planning Commission for a zoning code update? And is there, is there a majority supporting that or is there any reason not to do that? Okay. On item two, in order to bring it to 20 business days, since we're already sending a report and request to the Regional Water Board for other things, adding 20 business days change there.
Mayor?
Yes.
Sorry. Back on number one about the zoning code, there was the decision on the two-track, the 10 and the 20.
Right, and what, and so my question that I posed was that everything be 20 business days. Were there any opposition to that? And I didn't hear anything. So I can back up to that if we need to discuss that.
I just didn't recognize that that's, you were posing that question.
Okay, I will clarify that. We can go back to item one. And what I heard predominantly in that conversation was avoiding the two-track and having 20-business days standardized and going back to the Planning Commission for review of that. Councilmember Cordova.
I would be in support of leaving it on the 10 days, but I will go with the majority. I, I'm willing to, to, to play ball with everyone. I don't have a problem with doing that. But I just think that 10 business days, if that's what it's been, it does hold up a developer 20 business days. So I would recommend not.
Okay. Councilmember Mosby.
That's what I was waiting to say too. Stay on the 10.
All right.
So it's currently 10 calendar days. So is that what you mean to stay on? Okay.
So 10 calendar days? Okay. Any other discussion on that? Councilmember Vega.
Councilman Mosby, you know, you, you said you would support it, but I'd like to know the reasoning. Obviously, I don't want to ask you individually, but I mean, I'd like to know the reasoning for that, except for the developers, the holdup, that would be the only reason. Is that correct? To leave it on 10 days? To, to prevent, because it prevents the developer from?
Yeah, guy gets approved, he has to wait 20 days to do something, money's on the table.
So we're making it all 10 days, is what you're saying?
Times of the essence. I'm just, in this case right here, it's beneficial to the, to stay at 10.
To leave it alone.
Trying to make this easiest for the public. I mean, the 20 days would be nice, we could, but in this case.
But it's two-part, and I guess it doesn't follow our standardization, okay.
This, and right here, I think it would be detrimental to the. This, and right here, I think it would be detrimental to the public.
I got you. Thank you.
Okay. Back to item two. I heard discussion and potential support for asking the Water Regional Board to make that 20-business-days. Any discussion on that one? Councilmember Cordova.
I am okay with going with the majority.
Yep.
Councilmember Vega.
Me too.
So is the majority agreeing? Okay. The subdivision act, the bid protest, and the DUI recovery were not discussed in depth and pretty much accepted as standard practice, so I don't believe we need to discuss any of those. And then finally, the firework permit. Again, I advocate for leaving it at five-days since there's only a seven-day window, but there was some discussion about changing it. So any further discussion on that?
I'm okay with leaving it.
Okay. All right, so let me see if I can formulate the motion. It is to accept the proposed ordinance and reimburse the fees, not change the planning use in the zoning code, send the regional water board the 20-business-day request, and not change any of three through six. All right. Whose light went on first?
Can we, I would accept it with also adding in the additional cleanup items as noted in the staff report.
Good catch.
I was...
All right, so that was the second? All right, so Councilmember Mosby.
So Mr. Albro, I guess, can answer this. We have a fee study coming back. I assume at that time is when item number three could come to the table? Okay.
Okay. Any other questions, adaptations, concerns? All right. Seeing none, let's go ahead and vote. And that passes 5-0. Any written communications?
Nothing.
Thank you. Now you have an opportunity for oral commutations on city matters. You have two minutes if there was any additional comments you would like to make.
Nicholas Gonzalez, resident of Lompoc. So most of the time I come here, I'm very critical. I bite many of your ears off individually at times, and, but I want to thank you because several months ago, I started, I'm walking with some of the local people from churches, and we were walking some of our more troubled areas. And I bit a lot of your ears off, and I was very critical on different areas. And so where praise is needed, I want to give a little. Recently, I saw our street department go in and start filling in potholes in some of those streets that looked absolutely horrible. Some of the community members went in and got rid of graffiti. I've seen heightened police patrols on a, on a much higher level, and the, and the people in those areas are thankful for it. I've seen the implementation of some cameras in the area. I've seen the solid waste department go in and pick up the abandoned trash and refrigerators and things. So we know how to do things right, and I'd like to thank all of you up here and the staff for doing that, because it is making a difference for people's lives. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tonight, we are just a few days away from the second anniversary when the former city, excuse me, the former city attorney announced that the referendum to overturn ordinance 164017 had been unsuccessful and that the city of Lompoc would begin to accept commercial cannabis applications. Since then, 42 commercial cannabis applications have been submitted, with half of them being approved to date, allowing for the city of Lompoc to rake in an additional $580,000 to city coffers. In 2019, Lompoc permitted six cannabis retail dispensaries to open. Those dispensaries have provided much-needed jobs, filled empty buildings, provided patients and constituents with safe access to legally purchase, lab-tested, and certified cannabis products, and provide a new source of income for the city. In 2020, we will continue to see more retail shops open in addition to manufacturing, distribution, laboratory testing, and cultivation businesses. In addition to the many local jobs that will be created in Lompoc directly tied to the cannabis industry, many ancillary businesses not directly related to the cannabis industry will continue to feel the economic boost that they experienced in 2019. It is important for our leaders and our citizens to understand and correlate that the more successful the cannabis industry is, the more successful the city will be. The more successful that the cannabis industry is, the more tax revenue the city will have. The more successful the cannabis industry is, the safer this city will be. The success of the cannabis industry directly relates to the success of Measure D and the collection of much-needed revenue. In 2020, the city of Lompoc must support cannabis industry's success by promoting visitors and tourism. Persons within both the cannabis and wine industries are working to promote tourism. The city of Lompoc would do well to revisit the zoning distance from sensitive areas for onsite consumption by reducing onsite consumption zones from 1,000 feet to 600 feet. It would create a level playing field for all the current businesses and would eliminate any monopoly businesses for onsite consumption. We also need to talk about cannabis festivals and farmers' markets, things that will bring people here to spend their dollars. Having dispensaries and businesses alone will not bring people. We must promote tourism, and we must do that by encouraging festivals and farmers' markets. Thank you.
Seeing no one else rise, we will close oral communications and start with council comments and meeting reports. Councilmember Vega.
No meeting reports, but we have a new here, a year here to begin and draw a line in the sand, as I've mentioned to several other people, and I hope that we do that. I'm coming here with a little different attitude. I think that, I've had comments out within the city that says Lompoc needs to change, and there's some people that have posted online that said, hey, we're raising our kids and we're coming in here with a thought process to a world that no longer exists, so we need to adapt to what we have now so that we can make those changes and we can enjoy what we have instead of thinking that everything needs to stay the same. I have a family member that told me once that sometimes the long-term goals, we're too much on long-term goals. They're necessary, but we're not addressing the community right now to what their needs are at this time. Some of the amenities that we need to do, so promoting tourism, making our city safe, moving forward in a way where everyone knows how to have fun again. We don't all have to get drunk to have fun, but hey, it's a choice. But we need to have more of these choices here in Lompoc so that Lompoc can be more progressive moving forward instead of staying the same. We sit here and we argue over the budget over and over and over again, when in fact, we probably should be pushing forward and knowing where our weaknesses are so that we can make sure that our community is safe and promotable and we can actually market ourselves. Holding the beach open, you know, we're trying to beat up and point fingers to where the crime is and why it's here, but it's here, so we need to deal with it. It's time to push hard and push back, whether it's cameras, whether it's anything, but I think it's the public safety people, that's why they're here. They're here to push back. You know, we probably just need to make sure that we're providing the resources within our budget, and that's what the problem is, because some people don't understand that what we've gone through with the CalPERS issue and we're moving forward with the tax referendum, that was a huge thing to get passed to make sure the city doesn't gets in so far in debt that we can't even do it without several tax initiatives. So anyway, happy new year, guys, and you know what? I hope that we promote people, and I think you should ask your friends to show up to council. Aside from the public safety meetings and commissions and committees and whatever, it's not any good if we can't get them to come here, okay? They have their public comment, they have their forum, they get their three minutes of fame, can't sit back and complain and never be involved. So I think the goal here is, when you want something, you tell your people to do something and come in here, but when you don't want something, you fail to bring them. And they're not here to be supportive of the community as a whole unless there's something that they want personally. I kind of would like to encourage the city manager again, we talked about once upon a time, maybe seeing what we can do about having a big pot of coffee and maybe encourage people to bring cookies or something so we can make a more welcoming environment here to council instead of being so stiff. But anyway, thank you so much.
Thank you. Councilmember Mosby.
Caught me off guard. Speaking of good times, I want to thank the many, many volunteers and the thousands of people who came out to fourth annual snow day. So there was a good time out there. In fact, I saw you show up, too. As well as other good times, congratulations. I figured the city manager had been bragging about this report out there.
I'm leaving that to the man who...
Oh, I know, but it's out, it's hot off the press. So the cafer's available, online. Probably even sell hard copies for this, too, right? Will you guys sign it?
Yeah, he'll autograph them.
Autograph it. The other thing, several people have mentioned to me about Lompoc Highway One PCH. I don't think I need to make account, maybe you can investigate it. I talked to Caltrans already on that, it says it's kind of up to you guys.
Yeah. If I can jump in, I've already, Jeff and I have already talked about it. It's not a, it's not a very big process to do to change, if you wanted to, change H Street to Pacific Coast Highway. It's a fairly simple process.
Okay, just, well, you know, should I make a request to do that, to bring it back as a staff report?
Sure.
Let me make a council request to bring it back as a staff report.
Sure.
I'll give you a third. You've finally listened to an Economic Development Committee recommendation we were working on, how long ago? Councilmember Cordova?
Let's get it done.
So yes, please.
We'll get it done. For those who you know Tina Mercer, saw her today, she's out of the hospital, a great, you know, a lot of press rants with that lady, and a lot of the volunteerism that she did and her friends and such there. Hope you're not listening, Tina, hope you're sleeping and not watching council meeting, but congrats. The other component is, there's talk about the tax measure, and I think it's important to understand that with the tax measure coming up, that whatever component, I know you can't promote it, you can only educate. So I think it's important to educate it through all open eyes and not through a narrow-vision component. And remember, and speaking out to the people and the reason why I know I supported what we needed to do with the tax measure, and that understanding, and even talking with some of the more aggressive people in opposition to tax, which I'm opposition to tax, but in this case, when you have a tax that can come through that can actually save you upwards of $40 million on this, on a debt that you're obligated to pay already, we lock it in, we tie it in, you're actually going to save money with this payment? So I think it's important to look at through the eyes, through the whole round perspective. I mean, I talked to a number of people about that, they go, you're for a tax? And I explained to them why it's a debt that we're obligated to pay. If we wrap in, as we have per ordinance, that the day if it passes afterwards that we wrap in and put it, which, I don't know, I was going to try to ask the city attorney if we could change that to come before the motion I had made before that we have an ordinance in place. Could we pass an ordinance predicated on the passage, or would that make it more like a, would that make it more like a special tax coming forward?
So you're saying, pass an ordinance that says if the measure passes, then we're going to use the money in a certain way?
Yeah.
No, that would, that would make it a special tax.
That's what I thought. But telling the people that that is, that's the idea of the majority of council, is to make sure that we put in this, and auto-report say 85 million as of the last time, and it's already escalated since then, so, of the unfunded liability component of the pension obligation. So taking care of our debt that we have to pay anyways, so. Didn't do a sales pitch, that was an education pitch.
Councilmember Cordova.
I attended the badge-pinning ceremony yesterday at our fire department for our new promoters, so congratulations to all of them. It's a proud moment anytime I can attend anything like that because I see succession in our community and I see people that have been employees of this community in any one of our departments or divisions. I see people for 20 years and 30 years, and it's such, such a humble time for me when I get to talk to them because I realize that there are so many employees in this community that care that have been here and that care, so I really congratulate them on that. I don't typically have a lot of council requests, but I actually wanted to know, is there a limit for any one meeting?
Is there a limit on the number of requests you can make?
Yes.
No, there's no limit.
In that case, I have three, so just bear with me. Number one, I wanted to see, and I know, because we're going to jump into the whole tax measure thing, and then it's going to be an election time, and I think my goal for being on this council is always to try and button up as many things as we can button up to make life easier for everyone involved. So I'd like to request that the Planning Commission start a review of the general plan to ensure that if there's any inconsistencies or whatever, that it matches up to the zoning ordinance, because I know that that was one of the biggest things that kept coming back every time I had an opinion on the zoning ordinance. Well, it doesn't match the general plan, and we could do that later. I want later to be now, so.
Are you asking to give a second or just contribute?
No, I just wanted to interject that currently, Councilmember Vega and myself are working and an ad hoc to do that alignment.
Okay.
It will come back to you. I need to see Christie right after this meeting, as a matter of fact, on that.
Okay, so I can remove that one. I also know that there was an item that was discussed when we were doing budget last year in regards to having a budget review after the first six months, so I wanted to confirm that that was going to be coming back to us before we even get into anything else so that we can physically see what we have.
Yes, I actually was just talking to Dean about that today. Did you have a date that you could, beginning of March, probably, just with other things going on? We finished the CAFER, which is a huge, huge job, but it does take a little bit of time to run all the numbers.
Okay. And then, as much as we speak about public safety, I kind of came up with some things that I want to be able to see some improvement there. I know, and I study the vacancies report that is handed to us on a monthly basis, and I see that there has been no movement in the number of vacancies in the police department outside and separate from the three that were held on, during the budget cycle. There are still 10 to 12 vacancies consistently every month, and that is concerning for me because, for two reasons, because we're not, either our process is not working, I realize that there's a very low labor pool that we have to choose from. Is there a way that we could get at least a report to council that says in the past six months or in whatever path length, past length of time, this is how many people we've processed and so that we can see, and if there have been any rejections from our department for any individuals, at least let us know how many. It's hard because I feel like, as individually as a council member, I feel like I'm in the dark on that. I don't know why or how we can move that forward and at least get a few positions, so that would be part of it. The second thing would be to figure out if our police department or our city is going after any public safety grants. I know that when I consistently brought it up during budget season, we kept, I kept being told, well, we can't afford that because usually there's match funds and we can't afford that. But we have 12 vacancies and they've been there for this whole time, so is there money in that that we can say, we have these vacancies and we've had them for this X period of time, can we move towards that? So I would want a report or something on that. And then I know that businesses within our community are receiving letters saying, hey, you need to clean up the graffiti on your property, but I also know that before, there used to be a organization, and it's my understanding that there is an ordinance somewhere out there that states that our police department was working with community volunteers, and so I don't know if there's a way that we can somehow revive that. Again, considering the fact that we have all these vacancies, can we throw some money at that and say, you know, because I'm very concerned that graffiti is an act of territory, taking on territorial rights for, whether it's gang members or just kids out there doing nothing, or adults out there doing, finding nothing better to do. And so I would like to see us kind of revive that if there's an opportunity and we have, and we can kind of direct some funds towards that. That's a lengthy one.
Okay. I'm going to have Captain Martin here in just a second. So the vacancy report, if I wrote it all down here, we have that that's going out on a regular basis. The other report, I did ask Human Resources... other report, I did ask Human Resources, they did get that to me about how many people they've processed over the last, I forgot what the period of time was, but it was substantial, the number of people that were testing. There's a large part that just don't make the cuts, if you will, from, you know, the pellet B to the physical, to the background, everything else. The good news, and I'll let Captain Martin talk about who's coming and the grants, if you want to talk about that. And I forgot the very last piece. Oh, it doesn't, oh. Okay. He's saying it should be, our city attorney said it should be just a small and then we can do a future agenda on it.
So good news is we have four starting the academy. They're actually in the pre-academy right now. The full-time academy starts on Monday. Unfortunately, one of them got hurt today, but we're working through that. And we're also looking at picking up a fifth one who recently got out of the military and is putting himself through the academy. We are happy to give you the reports on the rest of information, but in, in a nutshell, we are testing about every 45 days and we're going to continue that because we have an academy starting in July.
We can, I'll work with public safety and we'll come up with a.
And then the graffiti abatement plan and.
So the two reports regarding the graffiti abatement and the HR report, I think just updating us on the process for the graffiti removal. I know the phone line still exists. I know there is a volunteer group that still works on it. We just need to see if they need any additional volunteers or some businesses had volunteered to donate additional paint or supplies or support that. So anything that's lacking that we can advertise to the community that they can support, I think would be helpful. So I'll give you a second on those two. Councilmember Mosby.
I was just going to say, I believe there's already a policy about graffiti abatement and how it's funded and paid for. So that's already there.
We can bring in that back too.
The other.
The only reason why I asked is because if letters are going out to business owners, you know, again, we're, we're kind of not giving people the notice for people that don't know, hey, this is an, you know, a program that we have. Reach out, here's some information.
Councilmember Strabau.
Yeah, well, Mr. Strabau, I'm going to kind of catch you off guard here real quick. First off, a thank you on the cafer. Surprise, surprise. Cannabis exceeded our sales projection, revenue projections by 130,000, I think we're in there, right? Were we using that money to backfill a low in sales tax or TOT?
Well, one thing we did is we balanced the budget and we anticipated about 450,000 of that money. Yes, we are seeing about a little bit over that estimate, but we're also seeing a lot of revenue, tax revenues that are coming substantially below our estimates. TOT, sales tax are ones that are pulling us down. Property tax was up. We're probably going to see about 80,000 more than we anticipated in property tax. So in totality, we're really flatlined.
Yes, I just wanted to bring this up because on the social media platforms, there's been a lot of, well, let's hire more police and let's, where's the money going to go and what's happening? I hate to use the word, but that, the cannabis industry has put us, like you say, flatlined. So the revenue is really a wash of what we had predicted. We, if we didn't have it, we'd be worse, but where we want to be.
We'd be in real trouble. So it's, I'm very thankful we have it. And I will, I know to answer Mrs. Cordova's question about budget updates, the CAFER does have a lot of good stuff. I think it's page 125 this year. So you get the budget of all the general, 126, thank you. You get the budget of what, however, all the general fund funds or divisions and departments did. You can also read through the, all the financial statements right after the basic finances. You go through every single one of how the utilities did.
Is this online?
Yes, it is.
Okay. So I feel it's important to put that out also to people that we don't have $580,000 extra now. We don't have an extra 130,000.
No, we anticipated, we were guesstimating based upon Grover Beach and other cities that had, had already started cannabis and we missed a little bit, but I thought we were pretty close. But I'll, I will come back and have an extensive mid-year update. But the CAFER is definitely a good resource to get some information. I encourage you guys to look it over. If you have questions, my door is always open. I'd love to talk. It's my passion.
Oh yeah. I speak CAFER. That's great. And I have no other reports. Thank you.
Thank you. I also want to thank Mr. Albro and the entire finance department team. I know they were working through the holiday and make a real effort to have very good reports when they submit it to our independent auditor so that we have a very good document and can really be proud of that work. So thank you. I know that was hard work. Councilmember Mosby.
I just wanted to ask the city manager real fast, is that our new utility director back there? No? We didn't get introduced yet.
I apologize.
I thought he was glutton for punishment back there.
I apologize for that. He's behind me. Yeah, so we had our, our previous utility director, Brad Wilkie, did retire, I believe the last day was the 30th of December. So we've gone out, we're still looking for a permanent replacement. In the meantime, we were very lucky to have Mr. George Morrow come in who has quite a bit of experience. He is also retired, but he's decided he likes pain and punishment. So he's going to come in and help us out for at least a few months as we're, we're still flying the position. We're getting people in. That time of the year, December, November, people just sort of, they don't look for jobs as much. So now that the new year is here, we're re-flying it, you know, all new flying, not just keeping it out there. So we're hoping to get some more. But I'll let George, you want to give a quick bio?
Very quick. Yeah, thank you for the opportunity to be here in Lompoc. Over the years, I've had a chance to come and visit your community, this community that I'm working at now, and it's been a real pleasure. I was utility director in Lowdyne, so part of the NCPA family. So we'd have periodic meetings down here and so known, known at least three utility directors from Lompoc over the years and been a utility director for 25 years in some different places. Also worked in Pasadena Water and Power and City of Azusa, if you know where that's at, on the 210 freeway east of Pasadena. So 20 years in California and worked elsewhere also. So so far I've been through all the facilities, everything, I feel comfortable with everything I'm seeing and I can be a resource. Please let me know.
Councilmember Mosby.
Welcome to Lompoc and I'm happy that you know how to say Lompoc.
They taught me that right away. Right away, I wanted to say Lompok, you know, 20 years ago, but they said, no, it's like cowpoke. It's Lompok, right? So I totally remember that and I correct people whenever I can. Thank you.
Thank you and welcome. I attended the Lompoc Valley Medical Center public meeting regarding the Champion Center and the potential partnership with Questwell to do a public health facility there, and it was well received. So we look forward to seeing that move forward potentially in February. I also was invited and attended the Village Dirtbags Bike Gift Event, and I want to thank all of those individuals for making it a wonderful holiday for several of our community members who might not be able to afford bicycles and helmets for their kids. I also attended the Lompoc Fire Department pinning. We had five promotions. I want to congratulate Anthony Hudley for becoming a battalion chief, Cody Lee and Christopher Martinez for being promoted to captain, and we welcome Christopher Martinez back to work from his cancer treatment. And then Jake Ochoa and Trent Ogan for being promoted to engineers. And it is a succession plan that is important to have in all our departments. And I just want to encourage our public that there are jobs available working for the city. It's quality work that doesn't get outsourced. We have openings in the police department. We have openings in the electrical department. That is a very difficult area right now. We will send you to get trained to learn how to be a journeyman. We provide a job that you don't have to travel all over the state of California to fix wildfire downed lines. You can sleep in your own bed every night because you're in the community and work for it. We have other positions. It's a quality job with quality benefits that you can have a living wage that again, won't be outsourced as much as we possibly can protect that. So congratulations to those individuals and look at our community as a job opportunity. I also attended the Future Advisory Council meeting. I've had the honor to be invited to be a part of that. It is an organization that is working towards providing a location for our Lompoc Valley youth to hang out in and feel safe in and have resources to help them contribute to the community, learn how to be a better part of the community, defend themselves, be confident against the gang environment and the drug environment that is out there. And so I really congratulate the members of that group and the individuals organizing it because it will be very unique and needed and they are making huge progress at a time that we need that. We have the upcoming point in time count for our homeless population. It is an important task that is done every two years by the Home for Good Organization in order to assess the impact on that population and on the communities. They are doing the count on Wednesday, January 29th from 5:30 a.m. to 8:30 a.m. and I am participating, but we need about 50 volunteers. If you can't volunteer, but you're willing to help out, we also need socks, toothpaste and toothbrush. It's sort of a exchange for information and gifts to, to those we encounter very early in the morning. If you'd like to volunteer, you can go to liveunitedSBC.org to register or you can go to the North and Santa Barbara County United Way Facebook page and also register there. And I look forward to seeing any of you join me in the morning to connect with those individuals down and out in our community and see what their needs are. I've had a request in order to help our city clerk get those agendas and draft minutes done, the draft minutes done much quicker. These lists that we talk about and what we say goes into the report. So I write mine down and in order to help her, if we would hand over those lists, especially when they're extensive to her, so she has the clarity for quickly doing rather than us sort of randomly mentioning one or two things and not getting enough detail. So I have made my list and we'll hand it to her at the end, but I'd like for us to find as many ways as we can help our staff be better in their jobs because when they're better at their jobs, we're better at ours. And it's a partnership. So I think kicking off the year and making those efforts is really important. And then last but not least, again, the loss of Ann Roger, a former Lompoc City Council member, planning commissioner, and most recently on our library commission is very sad news. She contributed, as soon as she arrived, almost a lifetime of service to our community and always gave her heart and soul to what she felt was best for Lompoc. And whether we had disagreed or agreed with her, she was really an important impact on our community. So I want to thank her family for her service and watch for that funeral notice next week sometime. So with that, Happy New Year, and I will adjourn our meeting for the Lompoc City Council to the next regular meeting at 6:30 p.m. on Tuesday, January 21st, 2020.